I call this meeting in order. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So did we add that? I have to make that as an add-on.
Correct.
All right. There was one add-on to the agenda. It's investigation. It'll be under 9B. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Open forum, if anybody wanted to speak.
Throw something out there. Not specifically related to specifically the city, but just to bring some attention to our current education system in Minnesota. I just wanted the social studies standards specifically. I just think that parents need to be aware of the changes that are happening in our social studies programs. So I'll do do a there's two statements, one from 2004 standards and one from 2020 standards. So this one is from 2004. This is what used to be part of this is what used to be part of the social studies department, Minnesota Department of Education standards, is to help students gain the knowledge and skills that are necessary to protect and maintain freedom. The study of U.S. history helps students understand the United States as a nation built on ordinary and extraordinary individuals, united in an ongoing quest for liberty, freedom, justice, and opportunity. Now, the 2020, there's a there's it's changed drastically. Here's a statement from 2020 in their one of the part of their mission statement. Helps students to be conscious and critical of their own biases and those of larger society. Prepare students to address the powerful, powerful social, cultural, and political inequities by looking at their identity through a lens of race and gender. So I just wanted to bring that up because it's this another area where we can bring some attention to this. If you have any concerns, go look at it. It's there's a lot of stuff in there. It's drastically changed in the last 10 years. Write your representatives because obviously our local school board and whatever their hands are kind of tied because this is all state-related stuff. But anyway.
Is this quite possibly a precursor to critical race theory?
It's that's all getting built into our education system right now.
When you get around what it is, would you explain it to me?
Gender identity stuff, critical race theory. Critical race theory is now changing. They're not calling it critical race theory. It's can't remember off the top of my head, but it's the CRT has different words, but it's kind of a little softer. But it's called they don't want to use critical race theory because everybody it's like a buzzword now. Now they're just calling they're just not using that phrase and they're working it into the education system. It's really subbrief, but it's there. You know, the teacher licensing standards are changing drastically along the lines of this gender stuff and everything else. So if you have any concerns with that, or I encourage you to look at it, write your representatives. It's disturbing. So anyway, okay. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right. We're onto consent agenda, approval minutes, bills, purchase orders, investments, donations. There was a donations by the Melrose Alliance Club of $1,000 for the Melrose Area Chamber of Commerce towards a Deuces Wild sponsorship. There is a resolution appointing election judges. And then there's a Stearns County RDB project engineering invoice. Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion approved. Second.
On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. We are on to reports. Eric Simonsen from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Welcome. Glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's a it's a pleasure to be here again. I had the opportunity to come last year and give you an update. And now I get to tell you about all the great things that the legislature did during 2022 session. That would be a pretty short conversation, as you well know. So my name is Eric Simonsen. I work for Flaherty and Hood as a lobbyist, and the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is our primary client, obviously. And of course, you are a member, and we're appreciative of that. The CGMC is now over 110 cities that belong to the CGMC, which is an organization that advocates specifically on behalf of cities in greater Minnesota outside the seven county metro area. We work primarily in six particular areas, so we don't work on everything under the sun, but we focus primarily on what's important to cities. Our agenda, our legislative agenda is set by the board and is done through a trickle-up effect through through various committees. And the committees that we have are local government aid and property tax, economic development, annexation and land use, transportation, environment and energy, and labor and employment. So if you think back, we got to kind of go back here to January of 2022, when the legislature came into session, we were looking at about a nine, just over $9 billion surplus, which is an unbelievably large number, largest surplus in state history. 2022 being an even year is a traditional year for a large bonding bill. You know, the budgets are set in odd years. Bonding usually generally happens in the even years. Infrastructure funding from the federal government was available in unbelievable amounts of monies. We still had unspent money from COVID that we received from the federal government. So in theory, there were a lot of resources to tackle some of the state's bigger challenges, or so we thought. We did have some challenges coming in to the session as well. At that point, we had just kind of got to the point where things were starting to open up after the pandemic. We still had mostly hybrid session, I would say. The Senate building was open almost 100% of the time. The House never opened their doors to the public. It makes it very hard to lobby when you can't find legislators. Hopefully, we're past that now, and as we go into 2023, we can actually get back to a little bit of normalcy. But the hybrid sessions are going to be challenging going forward. Of course, we had a redistricting year with the with the census, which happens every 10 years, but a lot of redistricting going on. That, of course, affects legislators and their behavior and their challenges that they're facing back home. 2022 is an election year. The entire legislature and the governor is up for reelection. We, of course, continue to have this ongoing political polarization, and it has gotten to the point where it's very hard to find middle ground for a number of issues, but things that shouldn't be political are being politicized. And that's it's making it very hard to get work done. And then, of course, they still had some unfinished business from 2021, including the frontline worker hero pay, which did get done finally. And of course, the UI fund was depleted, and they did they did manage to pay that back. So we had a lot of conditions that were present for a really productive session, just with the amount of money that we had and the amount of investments that could have been made or should have been made. It seemed like that was that was an opportunity that was lost. Legislators came close on many bills. You know, I went sat through the entire session and worked right up till the end, and I would have told you about five days from the end of session that it looked like things were going to come together, at least on some of the major finance bills, the tax bill, the jobs and economic development bill. There was a good chance for a bonding bill. And then it just kind of fell apart, and the session ended in what has been a very big disappointment. Our goals coming into 2022 for the coalition, you know, we spend a lot of time and do a lot of work on LGA, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a couple of slides here. But our request, our bill was for a $90 million increase to the local government aid appropriation. Right now, it's about $560 million statewide that goes out to cities that get LGA. We're looking for a $90 million. That represents about half of the unmet need that's still not covered by the state. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about the LGA formula here in a minute. We spent a lot of time on infrastructure with the, you know, the idea being this was the year for the big bonding bill. There was an opportunity for public facilities authority increases for those grants, childcare facilities, BDPI, Business Development Public Infrastructure Grants, and housing public infrastructure grants. All of these things, we were well positioned to have in a bonding bill, should one materialize, which, as you know, it did not. And then, of course, the D Childcare Economic Development Grant Program, that would have come through in the jobs bill. We felt pretty confident that that was that was going to come through as well. But again, that's another bill that they did not get done. For transportation, you know, city streets is financing and funding for city streets is a big deal for a lot of our members. For the large cities, they wanted to see an increase in funding. And of course, for the small cities, we've been chasing this for a few years, is trying to get enough dedicated funding into streets for small cities, which is under 5,000 population. You know, we kind of got to $18 million in 2021, I think. And I think our goal is like $22 or $24 million, something like that. But that doesn't have ongoing funding. That's something that we have to continually go back and fight for year after year. We use a lot of different ideas and advocacy things during this hybrid environment. And then, again, it's it's a big challenge when you can't meet with legislators, especially when you're when you're used to doing that and you're used to working in a very social atmosphere. It becomes very hard. We actually put together an LGA education video for the first time, just kind of and you would be surprised at how many legislators don't know what the local government aid or exactly how it works. So we put together kind of a primer education video for that. We did a pre-session priorities press conference, make sure that all the leaders of all four caucuses really understood what the CGMC goals were coming into 2022. We did remote testimony when we had to, and when it was allowed, we did in-person testimony in front of committees. And for the first time, we joined with some other groups to form a coalition to really push for water infrastructure funding. We joined with some of the trade unions and Minnesota or Conservation Minnesota, I think is the name of the group, and actually kind of tripled our power there, pulling some of these things together, trying to get larger investments into programs that cities can access to help pay for some of their water infrastructure programs. Talked a little bit about LGA, but the LGA formula, as you as you probably know, has been around since just the early 1970s. And it really was put together as a way to help keep property taxes low across the state and to make sure that city services here in Melrose were affordable, as well as city services in St. Paul and Minneapolis, or Think River Falls, or wherever you might be. It is a it is a program that has worked well and historically has been pre nonpartisan until recently. Of course, like everything else, it changes. Like I said, it's been around since the early 70s. About every 10 years, that's not set in stone anywhere, but about every 10 years, the formula itself, we take a really close look at that. Within the formula, there's a bunch of need factors that we try to make sure aligns the city's actual needs of today with what their LGA should be. And that 10 years is up. The last big formula change was in 2013. So we started meeting with other groups last fall to try to take a look at this formula. And those other groups are, of course, the League of Minnesota Cities, Metro Cities Group, and the Small Cities Group. House and Senate, nonpartisan staff. Legislators were not a part of this group. We try to keep it because it's really deep in the weeds on math. We try to keep it just to the staff that really kind of understands what's going on. And then, of course, staff from the Department of Revenue. So they started meeting in October of 2021. And the first step, of course, was to analyze the existing formula. And the idea is really simply, does it still work for the cities today like it did 10 years ago? And the answer is generally, it does work pretty well. What needs to be updated are some of the need factors to reflect the needs of today versus even just 10 years ago. So we went through a list of possible group factors. My sale list was probably like about 60 that we ran through the analyst to try to figure out what would work, what doesn't work, what might be better, what you know, what's going to work for the different sized cities. Our goal, CGMC goal going into this, is always making sure that our members come on the right side of this updated formula, and that's exactly where we ended up landing. This bottom point, I think, is is pretty critical. The CGMC analytical capacity has been a significant advantage for our members, and our members being all cities. League of Minnesota Cities doesn't have this capacity, and those other groups don't have that capacity. So I think that anytime you look at major LGA changes, this coalition is really driving the bus here, which is good. I think that's what you want to see. So our proposal, again, we started last fall. By the time session started in February, we had a formula proposal put together, two components. One, an additional $90 million. Two, the updated formula itself. So basically, how it works is that it maintains the basic LGA structure, which has been there for decades, of evaluating a city's need versus its capacity to meet those needs, whatever your tax base might be. And whatever that difference is, you know, that's kind of what factors into what your LGA payments may or may not be. The formula continues to split cities into three categories based on population, small, medium, and large. You can see the numbers there. We use the same method of calculating the city's capacity. We use the same method to distribute money within the formula. The biggest change is the new formula need factors. So we came into session with the idea that we had a lot of money to spend. We had a legislature that certainly had the capacity to do this. Investing new money into LGA seemed to make sense because it helps keep property taxes down. We're all coming out of a pandemic. A lot of things that really kind of gave us a sense that maybe we could get something done. So the House went through the four months of session, and their tax bill, when they passed it off the floor, included all of our formula updates that we wanted and $34 million increase. Not the 90 we asked for, but 34, you know, it's certainly better than nothing. Where we ran into problems was with the Senate. And here's why. There was nothing for LGA in the Senate tax bill. The Senate tax committees wouldn't even give LGA a hearing throughout the session. And the reason why seemed to be that no matter what we do with LGA, we can't avoid giving money to Minneapolis and St. Paul. Minneapolis and St. Paul, if you just think of them as a city like any other city, it's all scalable, right? But if you just think of it that way, they have as many, if not more, unmet needs than anyone out there. And no formula that we can put together that works good for greater Minnesota cities is poorly for the metro cities. That's that's just the reality of that formula and how it works. And frankly, that's why it's been nonpartisan and well-supported over the last many, many years. But any increases to the formula or changes in the formula that resulted in more money going to the metro cities was not popular with the Senate. Now, that being said, once we got to the point where the conference committee, Senate, House, started meeting together, we actually had, in the conference committee agreement, an additional $30 million increase to LGA, but they absolutely wouldn't do the formula update. That tax bill is still sitting there with all the other things that they wanted to do, something they left on the table when they walked away. It's unfortunate. A lot of work was done, and we didn't get it across the finish line, but nonetheless, we had a lot of good discussions. I think, depending on what happens with the election, you know, cracking that nut in the Senate is going to be the challenge for next year. So what am I talking about exactly? So the LGA proposal, specific to the city of Melrose. If you look at the far left, the blue line here, that's your current LGA under current law for fiscal year 23. It's about $962,000 that the city will get in local government aid for fiscal 23. The red line is our proposal, CGMC proposal. That's the formula update plus the $90 million distributed out over the state. That would have resulted in about a $1.12 million appropriation to the city of Melrose for fiscal 23. The red line was our goal. You could call it our goal, I guess, going into the 2022 session is to get that done. Governor position, orange, took no position. Again, not a budget year, but still plenty of time and plenty of room and plenty of capacity for supplemental budget, but took no position on increasing LGA. So the orange line reflects current law. The verbal line here in the middle, that's the House LGA proposal. You remember, I said that they originally did the formula update plus 34 million. You would have received just a just a hair over a million dollars in LGA with their proposal. Senate position, just like the governor, current law, nothing there. And then the blue line is the conference report. That's an additional 30 million bucks out of the formula, no changes to the to the actual formula itself. And we've got 992 versus the 962 that you currently get. So final outcome, as you know, no tax bill, no change, right back to where we started, Now, when we go into 2023, and again, our agenda still has to be finalized by the board here in November, but we suspect that we're going to pursue the same policy changes with respect to the formula. The $90 million is probably going to go up a little bit, just to kind of account for some inflation, but we'll be pursuing this again. While we didn't get it done this past session, we did have a lot of conversations. We did do a lot of the groundwork. Hopefully, we'll be off and running here soon. We, of course, support ambitious water and wastewater funding package. This has gotten to the point where the cost of these projects are just on the go. Between inflation and some of the responses that are required by cities to agencies like the PCA, the cost to individual cities is just beyond anything that anybody can possibly think of not affording. So there's a there's a lot of requests coming into the legislature and to the PFA for additional monies. We pursued $300 million going into this program, and that just barely scratches the surface into what needs to be done all across the state. So we'll continue those efforts, of course, going into 2023. You know, water, wastewater is a big deal for our members. And of course, we didn't have a bonding bill. And you continue to hear talked about, should there be, will there be a special session? I don't know. Your guess is as good as mine. I think earlier I said I'm still in like a 2% category that there might be a special session, but the closer we get to the election day, the closer we get to the end of the year, it's pretty unlikely. Neither House or the Senate ever produced an actual bill, so we don't know what was in the bill, should there have been one. While they tried to negotiate and agree on bill, it just couldn't materialize. Pay attention to how the legislature works. The bonding bill in an even number of year is usually the last bill across the finish line. Once they get all their finance bills done, get all their bills, get that work done, then this bill comes out. But it never did materialize in 2022. Childcare is a big deal. I know it's a big deal here. It's a big deal for a lot of our communities. It's less of a big deal in the metro area in terms of capacity, but they have their own set of challenges. We have capacity problems. We have staffing problems. We have all sorts of problems all across greater Minnesota that we are trying to solve without some silver bullet. We're trying to put as much money as we can into different programs to make sure that if a city, for example, wants to fund a childcare center, take an old building, change it into a childcare center, build a new childcare center, turn it over to a nonprofit, whatever the case may be, we're trying to get enough money into these programs so that that can happen. We know that, you know, centers is probably the way to go. The in-home daycare really has caught it for a lot of areas, but some of these centers. And we're starting to see a little bit of progress here, but we do have a long way to go. So this will remain a top priority, I'm sure, going forward. And of course, housing. And one of the things that is problematic with the state systems that with respect to economic development is that we spend a lot of time talking about how we're going to fund affordable housing, which is good and which is necessary and important. But what we're missing from that conversation is the conversation on workforce housing. How do we do that when the return on investment just isn't there for the developer? So I think, and again, we'll see how this shakes out in terms of our policy for next year, but I think we're going to have to pursue some new policy on how we create programs that allow cities to be a little bit more creative in how they finance or help finance or put together an incentive package for workforce housing. We are getting into the situation in a lot of places, rural Minnesota, where the jobs are there, employers are there. What we're missing is childcare, housing, and frankly, in some areas, population. If you look at bright spots in the session, this is probably one of them. $210 million is the largest investment in broadband ever made in Minnesota in one year. A lot of that, of course, comes from the federal monies, but $50 million came out of the general fund towards broadband. So we'll see where that goes. This is just to the point where applications have came in and they're in the process of doing that right now. So we'll see what kind of an impact we make with this. But historically, we've probably put in 20, 30, 40 million dollars a year. It kind of goes up and down since it was created in 2013. So this is a huge investment, and we'll see what kind of difference that we can make. So there's some some progress there. So our goal for small city streets here, $25 billion per year, that's kind of our goal, in dedicated annual funding. We couldn't get there with this legislature. There just wasn't any willingness to cooperate. And the House and Senate had competing finance proposals. But next year, when we come back, it will be, of course, a state budget year, and they don't have a choice but to pass a state budget. There's there's just no option. This last session, they didn't really have to do anything by law, but they will have to pass a budget at some point in time. So with with the amount of surplus that we got, investing money into the small city street program makes a lot of sense. So if you just look at the very last week of session, we started out really good, right? It felt like a typical session where things were starting to come together. It's very chaotic. It's a lot of drama, but you can kind of pick out the pieces where the stars are starting to align. So on Wednesday, the May 18th, the leadership released agreed upon spending targets. You might remember the big press conference out of the Capitol Bar, the governor, the House and the Senate leadership. They released these spending targets, and everything was going to be good. Two days later, the jobs, the energy and commerce conference committee report agreed upon in a hearing. Progress was being made. Saturday, the tax conference committee report agreement announced at a press conference, big deal, you know, cutting taxes for Social Security, et cetera, et cetera. And Sunday, of course, is the last day by constitution that they can pass bills, and they couldn't agree on all of those bills. And it felt like somebody just flipped off the switch. Everybody stopped working, and it just ran out the clock. And that's the point where it ended. And we've been calling, along with many other groups, for a special session ever since. We've had a number of our cities pass city council resolutions that have been sent to the governor. I know that the governor's staff has actually called Bradley Peterson and mentioned to him that, hey, we're getting all of these things. What can you do to help us get a special session? The fact of the matter is, the governor is the only one that has the power to call the special session, but he's been reluctant to do so without an agreement between the House and Senate. And he just can't get there. So we'll see what happens. Looking ahead to next year, 2023, big change in the legislature. You're looking at at least 47 new legislators. That's 25% of the whole legislature. That's that's a lot of new people. I know that historically, with a lot of new people, a lot of new ideas, everybody's got the best ideas in the world in the legislature. Working with that is a challenge. There's potential for change in legislative control, right? Now, the House is controlled by the Democrats, and the Senate is controlled by the Republicans. We'll see where that shapes out. Who knows? This slide was written a little bit ago. Governor's race will be competitive. I'll let you decide if that's true or false. Who knows? And again, 2023 is a budget year, and of course, we're going to have this large surplus, and they will have and they will have to pass a budget at some point in time. But our focus now, once we get past the election in November, is going to be sitting down with all of these new legislators and just kind of educating them on what's important for greater Minnesota, especially the ones that are from the metro area. It's just a different world out here, and folks need to understand that before they start thinking, well, what are their good ideas for?
Are you getting any kind of economic indicators that that multi-billion dollar surplus may be higher?
Yeah, so if you look at, I mean, just looking at the numbers as they roll in, the revenues roll in on a monthly basis, we're still coming in above the projection every single month consistently, which is a little bit surprising. I thought it would kind of flatten out a little bit, but we're been above that. So everything is pointing to, and we'll know when the November forecast comes out in December, everything is pointing to a larger surplus than what was forecasted last year, which is scary. So upcoming events, we've got our fall conference in Alexandria in November. Of course, our summer conference is up north this year in East River Falls, which is actually a perfect way up there. And then January twenty-fifth is our Legislative Action Day at St. Paul, arguably one of the most effective legislative action days in the legislature. Legislature will come in on January third this year, I think it's a long session, so it'll be very interesting, to say the least. So, any questions? There's a lot in a short period of time.
Good.
Must have covered everything.
That was a lot.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you'll be hearing from us regularly, but 2023 will be interesting, for sure.
Definitely will be.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Have a great evening.
Chief Mouse, good day.
Good evening. August 2022, in our monthly statistics, in our traffic area, we had fourteen citations, thirty-nine verbal warnings, no written warnings. This year, we had two hundred and seventy-three calls requests for service, last year was two ninety-two. Last year's ICR was two thousand five hundred fifty-six, and this year we're at two thousand two hundred ninety-five, so we're down two sixty-one overall for the year. Thirty-two agency assists, pretty normal for us right now. As Mary is the highlight, school's been going for a few weeks now, things have been going really well. We've been up there on and off just on a casual basis, and then a few calls, nothing out of the ordinary for us up there, but it's good to see the kids back, and so far, they're excited for school, see what happens in April and May again, when they get the urge to get back out and enjoy the weather, but things have been going good up there. An update for, a couple of things that Scott would have normally covered, but he's not here tonight. We did go to trial on the Melrose Community LLC, one Ten Rose Park property. That was a full day of testimony for several of us here, as well as some other individuals that worked with the city on that. What ended up happening with all of that, the Mr. Bonner's side had their time to present, we had our time to present, and I believe we just ran out of daylight, and the judge asked that both attorneys present their closing arguments in writing, and then once those are received, which the deadline is for tomorrow, the judge will take it under advisement, and they have up to ninety days to come back with a decision. I've seen that very common in cases we do in the criminal world, as well as something like this, so probably mid-December-ish, we may have an outcome on that. So wasn't in the courtroom all day long, but it seemed to go pretty well from the conversations I had, and it's just a matter of seeing how the judge looks at all the evidence and makes their decision. Nuisance properties that got brought for abatement, we have two remaining, they have about two or three days left on when they were served, given their availability to take care of things and whatever else. Those will be presented to Scott as well if they're not resolved. Did try to make contact with them, to nudge them along so that we're not going into another court filing and extending time with Scott doing work and myself and whatever else, so it might have fallen on deaf ears, but we'll see how it goes, so maybe we'll be lucky enough that everything will be vanished by next week, but can't guarantee any of that. Other than that, I think we're doing all right on the police department side. Questions?
Good.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, Greg.
Scott is not here, so on to city engineer report.
All right, Mayor Council, for the end of August, early September here, we've been working primarily on housing, got some daylight court activities going on, going to get some quotes out there for construction to see what it's going to take to build out those additional four lots and make sure it's worthwhile to do that, get that in front of you guys eventually here. Been working on proposals for some surveying on some of the other MATA projects, and our surveyors also worked on some utility vacation, that kind of thing for the city. Otherwise, our soil borings are complete for the electrical department, our street borings will be clear for utilities next week, so those should be coming in soon, we can update those street numbers, hopefully reduce those and make budgets even better. That's it for me, anything else for you guys?
Thanks a lot. Sheila.
Okay, we are waiting on site plans for the redevelopment of the US Bank property and the craft lot on the US Bank property. They hoped to make this meeting, but they were missing two elements of their plan, and they wanted to submit a complete packet. Plan construction is next summer, opening in the fall, and they are now targeting your October meeting, and they are very determined to make your October meeting. The craft lot developer is currently working with stormwater engineering plans with the Sauk River watershed district, so waiting to do plan review on both of these developments. We've been working on code enforcement concerns, which is going to appear later in the agenda. We are right now working on the Minnesota State Active Transportation Infrastructure Grant. Letter of intent is due October fourteenth. With that, we are applying for funding of the proposed trail connecting daylight court to fifth. After the letter of intent, we will find out if we are invited to make a full application. We also have pending grant application with deed focused on childcare expansion in the community. Notifications occur for that at the end of October. In addition, we have submitted a grant request for the basketball court and playground equipment in the park. Again, notification expected at the end of October. Coming up on the agenda is a request from the Arts Council. You already have a blurb about that. We have asked for the lighting to be included in their grant proposal for the sign cost, so that would not be an in-kind donation from the city. That estimate came in at almost fifty-five hundred dollars, which would include the boring conduit wire and installation, so we asked them to include that in their grant as opposed to in-kind. So the city's in-kind donation would be excavating, legal work, recording, variance fee, hydroseeding landscaping, and we've worked with Gary on the costs of that, as well as the annual maintenance, summer lawn, winter snow. We had an opportunity to meet with Pete Rockford this week, and he is very happy to have the sign on his property, so if you have any questions about that, we can discuss that later in the agenda. You'll notice we've requested a special meeting with the council for Monday, October third at seven AM. We'll have two items of business on there. One parcel, four-twenty craft drive, the owner's been constructing storage units on the property and would now like to build a fifth building running east-west, perpendicular to one, two, and three. But the city of Melrose received from the state of Minnesota a trunk, turnback of the trunk highway fifty-two, and it included a hundred and seventeen point five-foot easement from the center onto the existing craft drive. And with discussions with our department heads, it was agreed that eighty feet would be sufficient to keep. So notice is now being published in the newspaper, and property owners have been notified. The easement actually runs wider and longer than this property, but it was agreed in consultation with the city attorney to limit the easement vacation just to this property. The property to the north is the Bonner Rose Park property. And on Monday night, the Public Utilities Commission took action to approve this. The second item in your special meeting is going to be an individual who wants to build storage sheds in the industrial park. The land is currently owned by the city and not MATA in this case. We are working on a lot split currently, and so you'll get more information on that as we get closer to the special meeting. In both cases, the special meeting was driven by the desire of both individuals to build yet in the fall. We have since learned that the construction in the industrial park will likely not occur until spring due to the engineering requirements, but the individual is incurring costs at this point developing the plans. And just a final interesting note, we have processed two hundred and twenty-eight building applications, building permit applications already. A hundred and seventy-three of those two hundred and twenty-eight have occurred in the third quarter or since July first.
Shingles?
Shingles. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Colleen?
So progress is happening on the bridge. Landwear is back in town, and they will stay in town until hopefully the project is done. Starting September twenty-sixth, I'm sure you all saw the sign on Main Street, there will be the fifth corner, so will be closed, Fifth and Main, for, through traffic for about ten days, so there will be a route around that. We, Sheila and I spent some time, two days ago, I think, yesterday, was it yesterday? I don't know. Visiting with all the businesses, we weren't able to see Lulu, but we got ahold of everybody else, and we talked to them and made them aware of it. We let Jenny O know, we let Willa Trucking know, the school is aware of it as well. I realize that people are starting to get construction fatigue at this point, and we really do want to thank the public for being as patient as they have been, and there is an end in sight, so that's good news. Wastewater Project continues, and as Sheila reported, we are just really working on all of the different housing projects in addition to Sauk River Park. There is a application into the Department of Labor and Industry right now, and so we should be hearing back from them early next week as far as our water lines. Our building officials are going to be able to do the inspections on that, which is great, so we're not going to be held up by the state in that respect, so hopefully we're going to hear about that next week, and that's kind of where we're at. Any questions?
Good. All right. So we have an action item, it's Resolution Number 2022 dash fifty-five, resolution adopting the proposed tax levy. Tess will be telling us about it.
Good evening. In front of the council tonight is the 2023 preliminary budget and tax levy. Just to kind of give a quick summary, staff have held strategic meetings with the department heads, city engineer, our economic development consultant, and all staff over the last few months to get a clearer scope of what our projects and needs are for the city. This was brought to the council for review at its August thirtieth workshop meeting. So the city has a number of pretty significant projects either currently underway or in development, including the RDB project, the Sauk River Park campground improvements, numerous potential housing projects, maintenance and security needs, street improvements and equipment purchases. So those were all taken into account when we prepared this budget and capital plan. So for 2023, the general fund has preliminary budgeted expenditures of three million one hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred twenty-eight. We also have a large capital budget plan for next year with all of the capital accounts totaling four million six hundred sixty thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars. So throughout this process, there has still been a number of unknowns. We are required to certify our proposed tax levy to the county no later than September thirtieth, and then we'll submit the final levy in December. And as a reminder, that levy can be reduced, it just can't be raised. So tonight, we are proposing to certify a preliminary levy for the general fund of one point five million and the debt levy at ninety thousand, so a total levy of one million five hundred ninety thousand. That would result in an estimated tax rate of fifty-eight percent, which is about an eight and a half percent increase from the 2022 tax rate. It is expected that when the final levy is brought to your, brought to the council for approval in December, that that tax rate would be reduced and a little more in line with last year's. In addition to the levy then, we have to certify the truth and taxation information, so we're looking to hold that hearing at the December fifteenth council meeting at six o'clock. So if anybody has any questions, otherwise, we're looking to approve Resolution 2022 dash fifty-five for the proposed budget and resolution.
Yep. So the first is the council take action on the proposed resolution. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
On my favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carried, and second part of that is council take action to approve the preliminary 2023 budget. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion is carrying.
I'll touch on the next one also. Um, our phone and network cables are currently all in one of the offices that used to be an IT room and is now being utilized as a staff up. And due to this layout, we've run out of space, and the cabinet therein is getting very warm, potentially overheating. So we have worked with our IT consultants, and their recommendation is to kind of start fresh and rewire all of those into our vault. That would be better temperature controlled, it has better security, it would be maintained along with our server and other information in a secured location for that. So to do that project, it would result in both ARVIG as well as potentially Report Electric to drill the holes, to rerun the wires, to patch those all in. The total quote for the project is eighteen thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars, and that would be a cost share with the Utilities Commission, and they have approved this at their meeting Monday night.
I actually stopped in to look at it, and to me, that moving that network closet doesn't justify an eighteen thousand dollar expenditure. I've seen a lot of network closets, and there's worse closets out there, a lot dirtier, less airflow. As far as the security end of it, I don't know what kind of security we're looking at actually being able to plug into the network switch in there, because we can just plug into these jacks here, and you're effectively plugging into the switch, so from a security standpoint, a network security standpoint, I don't know that you gain a whole lot by moving it from theft or something to that effect. You know, we don't have a whole lot of equipment in there, I don't know that justified by the cost of the equipment.
It is being rebooted about every two months.
What's that?
All the equipment in there, because it gets so hot that it just shuts down.
Right, so we can probably fix some of the heat issues. One is, we have all the equipment right now sitting on top of each other. There's no place for the heat to go, so it all sits on, it's like an egg sitting in a frying pan, it just sits on top of each other. So if you add a little space between the equipment, add a few more vents on the cabinet with maybe a small fan in there just to move the air out, I'm sure we could probably come up with the heat, a solution for the heat also. You know, obviously, this is something that has to happen right away, because it's been that way for, whatever, since the building's been built, it's been there. Granted, there's been added equipment in there.
There's no, we'll be spacing equipment apart.
Right, right. We could get an actual network cabinet that has the proper venting in it and put that on the wall there also, but, you know, eighteen thousand dollars to move the cabinet.
Colleen, I'm not a techy, and you know that, but did we recently upgrade a bunch of that computer-related equipment?
Correct, so we actually just installed new servers, yeah.
It was more than twenty bucks.
Yep.
So we want to make sure we preserve this for as long as we can.
Correct.
I understand what you're saying.
That stuff is, correct me if I'm wrong, that's in the vault already. That's the servers, it's not the network switches. This is a completely separate area, this is a, network switches on a rack on a wall.
We've been watching this for a number of years and working to try to find ways to kind of patch the solution. You may have seen there are probably four vents that we put in there to try to get some airflow into that cabinet. We've tried to look at increasing the space, we've had to add switches though due to all of the additional ones needed, so we've kind of utilized that whole cabinet that's there. We've looked at trying to space them out. So we've worked on trying to increase the airflow and keep them going a little better.
And we've been, if you think about it, since nineteen ninety, it's been there, and you think of how old this building is, for the small investment that you would have to make to reroute that into your vault where it's secure and that's not going anywhere, and we have more than enough capacity to put that large cabinet in there, you think of that, that is something that's going to last you, you know, thirty years easily. You're going to get your money out of it, because you certainly aren't going to have to reroute it once it's in that big vault, because there's ample room in there for that.
And also, basically, it'll clean everything out of that room, it'll be cleaned up, and it'll be an office then, right? it'll be an, an office then, right?
Correct, yes. I believe everything at one point had been placed in there, um, and then it had been turned into the HR office because that used to be in a cubicle, and those documents had to be locked up and secured. So when it was moved to that, I think some of it had been moved out.
Well, I guess, um, I would like to take a crack at it if I could to take a look at it myself. I was in the network, uh, network field for fifteen years. Um, I don't think we need to spend eighteen thousand dollars on this, this was not a budgeted expense, it's ran a model blue again, and I think we could save some money by just leaving where it's at. Um, so I'd make a motion to table it until next meeting. I would like to table it until next meeting.
Did you get more than one quota?
Yeah, there was, there was two quotes for the moving of the wires, well, I, I don't remember, I seen that detail.
If I could ask, it was moving the wires, is that basically rerouting the existing wires into the vault, or is that running all-new cables?
It would also be running new cables.
So we'd be running all-new?
It would be Cat Five cables.
Cat Six cables, all the, all the jacks around the building?
Right.
That feed off of that closet.
And a server rack, and patch the panels, testing, labeling.
Right.
Splicing the fiber, moving the network equipment, and reconnecting and testing.
Right.
I feel like it makes sense to move it to the vault, and if that room's going to be used as an office, it probably should get moved out of there, but I have no idea on the cost.
I think we should, you'll look at it personally, just so everybody has an idea what we're looking at. Spending eighteen thousand dollars, we can't just throw eighteen thousand dollars at this without possibly trying some more solutions. We've been dealing with this for, it's been there for thirty years, right?
Yeah, but it's been getting worse, it's getting forward.
It's, it's in an actual, it's not even in a network enclosure, it's in an actual, like, kitchen cabinet. It's, it's not, get a network cabinet, put it on the wall, put a fan in there, and space the equipment apart, it's that simple.
But the problem is, is it's an office, and that's the issue, so if you put a fan in there and you have a cabinet where there's an existing office, if that person ever has to bring people into their office...
They make them pretty quiet. I mean, it's, it would not be nearly as loud as sitting in here listening to the HVAC system. Seriously, this is...
I'm fine either way, I just, I've, I've had to deal with it, because...
I know, you guys get called about it.
I'm here at seven-thirty, eight o'clock, because the internet's networking, you don't plug things, and I know Romi, before he retired, he used the one that drilled holes and installed vents.
Right.
It was a Band-Aid, but still happens. And when all that equipment does rev up, because it's hot, it gets all the air too, so...
Right.
I mean, I'm fine with you wanting to take a crack at it, but whenever you're thinking you're...
Yeah, I mean, you can't, I mean, we know the equipment's locking up because of heat. Another question, is that a fact? Is it going into thermal, you know, protection and shutting off?
You can barely touch it all when you grab it off.
Right, I know, I, I grab it, it's hot, but it sits right on top of the switch in there.
Right.
And it's going to get hot. It's in an enclosed cabinet, and there's four little vents on the side of the cabinet. There's no fan, there's, air's not going to move out of there, um, because there's, there's nothing moving the air out of there. So...
So if the entire system isn't relocated, are we still looking at the sixty-three-hundred from ARVIG for this racking device? I, it's obvious I'm way out of my depth here, but...
No, that would be if it needed, if we needed to buy the rack to put in the vault for the equipment to go in the, in the vault.
So the total project is eighteen thousand, so it's about nine thousand from each side?
Yep. Freeport Electric's about twelve thousand, four hundred, and then ARVIG's was six thousand, three hundred and fifty-one.
All right. So you, you made a motion to table it, right?
Right.
And if you table it, what are you going to do, get more quotes or?
I'll take a look at it.
Uh, probably...
I won't, I won't even charge the city to look at it.
If, if we're going to sit on it for a month, would it be possible to say like once a day have some sort of a thermometer or some way that we can measure the heat? And then if things do get moved or adjusted, we can see if there's an appreciable difference as far as the cooling factor?
You certainly could do that, yes. However, I do want to again emphasize that what we're trying to do is come up with what would be a, a permanent solution for this situation. And if you go back to from, as long as we've had this building, which has been since nineteen ninety, and if we move it into the vault, you're going to get another thirty to forty years, if not more, out of having it in a very secure location, and it's one and done in my view. I don't think we're going to have to look at making major upgrades any longer. We are also talking about doing some upgrades to our SCADA system. If that does happen, then we, again, are going to be right back to where we are now. Even if you are able to move things around and get things working in that cabinet, it still does not fit the equipment that we have, and as technology changes and as we continue to do different things logically, it needs to be in a secure, better location. One of the things that both our insurance company has talked about, and Missouri River Energy Services has talked us about, is cybersecurity, and one of the things that we get dinged on is the fact that we don't have a very secure place for all of our equipment, and so by putting it in the vault, that also addresses the need relative to cybersecurity. Or not cybersecurity, but at least the security that we are sure that people don't have access at least to that part of it, because it's in a secure location. Not necessarily people being able to hack into our system, I understand that.
The equipment itself in that now, in that closet contains no information about the city. It's not the servers, it's not the data, it's just the network equipment, correct?
There's a server in there still. Like, there's a server in there still.
Everything is in there on this, I just don't tell you.
Yeah, I didn't see a server in there. But anyway, as far as the security access to the network, I can take that cord right there and plug it in my laptop, I'm on the network.
Mm-hmm.
So as far as physical security, we're not gaining anything. Anybody can come in here, plug their laptop into that without, you know, not accessing Wi-Fi, automatically get an IP address, I'm on the local network, inside the city center.
On the guest front, yes.
No, that is, that is, I believe, the city's network.
Well, if anything I want to, I, I mean, if you guys, you two are considering at least giving twenty months, I just want documentation if stuff is getting better. Reason why, I personally voted toward on the Public Utilities Commission, is that we have a, a clean office, um, where somebody can work in, and there's room in there. I know I banged my head, you know, but I went in there to have a meeting at one time, but it's the majority rules here. Whatever you guys want, I just, that's...
I'm fine with giving it a month, but I, I mean...
How about an old temperatures?
If I fail, I'll admit, it was a failed venture, but give me a chance. Don't cost the city anything.
I think, I think more so, it's the heat factor and then a more pleasant working environment for whoever's occupying that space. And I'm not saying security isn't an issue, but I think that's probably number three.
All right. So it's a break down this morning. So then, um, we're sending your motion, and we'll table it?
We're sending, well, I guess you don't need a motion to table it.
You don't need a motion to table it, do you?
You need a motion to table it?
Well, I just want to know what, are we bringing it back? I mean, are we tabling it till the October meeting for further research by House Member Placel? I don't like that motion, if, uh, that's what we're doing, or if we're not, if you're not setting any time, I mean, I don't really care. If you're just tabling it, no, but if you're going to...
I just want, I just want what's happening, I mean, what you did, not that you were only here once, I, I would like to know, just give me a real good study on it.
Oh, yeah, I'll let you know what I find.
No more than twenty pages, Tony.
No, I don't want even that.
Double spaced?
Okay. All right, so then, yeah.
So we're going to readdress it in October.
Okay. Thank you.
How technically this didn't even have to come up.
All right. So next is, uh, streets we per purchase, uh, let's see here, council to consider approving the purchase of a street sweeper, uh, was there any questions for anybody? Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion is carried.
And you're going to get that order in right away, Gary? Before the question comes?
Before it goes up in the other hearing.
No.
Okay, then we're on to whole business where the Melrose Art Council budget allowance, assigned ownership, who wants to speak on that one?
I can address that. At its July, at the July meeting, you guys tabled a decision regarding assuming ownership of the Welcome sign form, pro, as proposed by the Melrose Arts Council. The Arts Council is finalizing actually right now a grant application to pay for the construction of the sign. The ownership and maintenance of the sign is an element of their application and could represent an in-kind donation on the part of the city. As Sheila had mentioned earlier, she had talked about what our in-kind cost would look like, and that we would be including the electrical lighting in their grant application, as that would not be an in-kind cost. The ownership and maintenance of the sign is an element of their application and could, as I said, represent the in-kind donation, so they are really wanting to know if the city would be interested in drafting up a legal easement and entering into an agreement with Melrose Feed Mill, and also being the owner of the sign, which means that the city would have ongoing costs, albeit somewhat minimal. Um, initially, it would be the excavation and landscaping, and then the ongoing cost would be maintenance of the sign, lawn work, and snow removal. The, as I said before, the installation of the lights is not a cost that the city proposes to assume, um, but rather that should be part of the grant application that's submitted by the Arts Council. We did, as Sheila said, talk to Pete, and they're very much in support of having this on their property, very much in support of working with the city on coming up with a location that would work and be viable. So at this point, I guess we are requesting that this council give consideration approving the city to assume ownership and maintenance of the Welcome to Melrose sign.
So would that be Gary's crew doing the excavation then part?
Mm-hmm.
You don't have the album or the appliance to it?
Just start with that. Right. Gary, Colleen, and Travis, are any of you aware if the lights are going to be part of the footing, or are they going to be like, uh, a foot or two away in the ground shining up the light?
I don't know what the exact...
I don't know if that's really been quite determined yet, that's kind of up to Roger.
That's not necessarily figured in as far as placement goes, it was just lit, uh, lighted or not lighted. Probably more like you said, a couple feet away shining back onto it.
Similar to what our, our sign is out front of city center.
Well, before anything, I just want to say thank you to Pete Rothfork. Um, he's a true business owner that gives a lot of his time, and he does a lot of stuff for people that most of us don't know. Um, kind, gentle person that'll help anybody, so I just want to say thank you to him for, for this, and I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So move. I'll second.
Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carried. Uh, first informational item is, uh, Utility Commission meeting minutes, and on the new business, the LCCMR grant, uh, agreement.
Yep, the work plan was approved by LCCMR for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand at the Stock River Park Improvements, and in your pack, it was a grant agreement for the project. Couple things I want to point out, um, is just, you know, we have to follow the work plan, um, we will have to pay prevailing wages, but that's figured in when we applied for the funding, and it basically will fund, you know, a good part of the project cost, um, as we've talked about before. The shower and bathroom is still something that we need to get funded, however, I did just have somebody approach me today about potentially, um, providing a significant donation, and we do have a couple other items coming in for that, so, anyway, I would recommend that the council approve the LCCMR grant agreement.
And...
Go ahead.
We're comfortable with what Tim he agree, I read it twice, and it's really comprehensive.
There's a lot of stuff in there, plus, I had a concern that it, it has links to like Minnesota state statutes, like Minnesota statute eighty-four dot zero-two-six, sixteen B dot ninety-eight subdivision one, ML twenty-twenty-two, chapter ninety-four, ML twenty-twenty-two, chapter ninety-four, um, a couple other ones, and there's a lot of stuff in there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it talks about invasive species, and granted, this, so there's been some, a lot of concern around LCCMR and, you know, the sustainable practices that the United Nations, agenda twenty-thirty is, is pushing, and there's a lot of endangered species on that, um, on, on our, um, Minnesota list of endangered species, weeds and, and grasses and stuff. Not that I'm concerned about this project, because this grant would only affect city property, but there are concerns that some of those grants now will be used to control private properties that are abutting other lands. So that being said, this one I don't have a lot of concerns about, but if we have any other LCCMR grants, we should take that into consideration and be careful on what we're signing. So anyway...
And what the nice part is, just to clarify, because the RDB project was really done prior to this, and all the work was done essentially regarding all the statutes that you just talked about, Tony, so if anything were to come up, the research, the, everything has been done, and so our documentation exists for anything that potentially could come up in this particular project, and I just, again, the DNR is a pass-through for this, this, they don't really, I mean, it's, they're the pass-through for it, and they put all the legalese stuff in there like they do for all of their grants, and so I know what those are, I'm comfortable with what they are, um, we know what we have to do regarding the prevailing wage, so I think, um, we have, um, you know, staff can, can manage this pretty, pretty well, I think.
Right.
It's relatively small when it comes to grants.
You said it's pass-through, but there are, you know, obviously specific things in the contract that reference DNR materials.
Mm-hmm.
So yes, the grant, it's not just getting three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from, it ties the city to responsibilities everywhere around that property, where we need to do, be responsible for, you know, the types of grass that are down there, um, pollinator best management practices, stuff like that, so it's, it's a lot more complicated than just getting three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
You can't spray where the bees are, but, you know...
Right, right. It controls what you can and can't do on the property for a number of years. So anyway, being said, I'll make a motion to accept this grant, um, contract.
Okay.
Second.
Kristen, second, home favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Thank you, Tony. So now we are on to, um, a, a closed session for, uh, law enforcement, so at this time, we need to make a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close.
Second.
Home favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried, there is nothing else after this.